Good evening, members, ladies and gentlemen. We will now take a one-minute silence for Her Majesty the Queen. Thank you. Chelmsford City Council have conveyed condolences to His Majesty, King Charles III, and the Royal Family on the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. Her Majesty visited Chelmsford in 1958 and other visits followed over many decades, all remembered with great affection, with the last being in 2014. Her Majesty's greatest legacy to Chelmsford came in 2012, when the Queen granted city status to the town as part of the celebrations for her Diamond Luke Jubilee. Chelmsfordians are immensely proud of this connection to her long reign. We share the sentiments of loss and sorrow felt all over the world at the passing of such a loyal and dedicated servant to this country. I would now like to take a one-minute silence for councillor John Gally, for whom we will hear tributes later. Thank you. I would now like to ask my chaplain to say prayers.
We pray for the protection and well-being of those who live and work in our city of Chelmsford. We pray for our city officials, our mayor, deputy mayor, councillors, that they will serve wisely. We pray for all head teachers, teacher support staff and students of our schools. We ask for protection for our police, fire and other emergency personnel. And we remember especially our hospitals at this time, for the nursing homes, our GPs. We pray for all the local businesses that they will prosper. And as we approach Christmas, we do pray for the homeless. I'm going to finish with the prayer that was used yesterday at both the funerals of John. Teach us, good Lord, to serve Thee as Thou deservest, to give and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heed the wounds, to toil and not to seek for rest, to labour and not to ask for any reward; save that of knowing that we do Thy will. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and streamed live on our website. I have also been asked at meetings of the council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that, in the case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Follow the green fire exit signs to leave the civic centre onto Duke Street via the stairs, which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining this chamber. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the war memorial immediately outside the civic centre and, if and when it is safe to return to the building, an announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until told that it is safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please, would you silence or switch off your mobile phones whilst the meeting is taking place? Agenda item two, apologies for absence. We have received apologies from councillors Helen Ayers, Dan Clark, Jeremy Lager and Jenny Large. Are there any other apologies that we should note? Yes, sir?
Absolutely. Wendy, Adrian, just get their apologies.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item four brings us to the minutes of the meeting on the 20th of July 2022, which have been distributed. Are you happy to accept them as a correct record?
Agreed.
Agreed. In that case, the minutes are approved. Thank you. With your leave, members of the council, we will take agenda item five, Deputy Mayor's announcements, under agenda item 11. Agenda item six brings us tributes to our colleague and friend councillor John Gally. And I'd like to invite councillor Potter to speak first.
John Gally, a husband, a father, a grandfather, parish councillor and a city councillor. Here at the council, we first met John in 2000, when he was standing as the Conservative candidate for Boreham Ward in a by-election, where he won the seat with a good majority. Little did we know at the time that John was known as Mr. Boreham. John had retired early from Coots, the Queen's bank in the Strand, due to the severe arthritis which affected him so badly. John, as deputy leader, then teamed up with councillor Whitehead as leader, another banker, but not from such a noble bank, just Barclays in the High Street. This was the start of a long friendship and professional relationship and gave John the opportunity to put his financial skills to good use for the residents of Chelmsford. John's talent and expertise was critical at the time of our great expansion for Chelmsford and part of his legacy to our successful bid for city status, which was granted in 2012. Those of you who attended John's funeral yesterday at the Chelmsford Cathedral heard councillor Whitehead's eulogy to John and how their relationship sometimes mirrored the TV series Dad's Army. That couldn't be more true, with councillor Whitehead as Captain Mannerin and John as Sergeant Wilson and the rest of us Conservative members as the platoon. There are too many instances to remember. I still have a giggle remembering some of them. My personal view of John was his ability to explain his view on a certain issue in such a way you thought you'd come up with the idea yourself. He was always helpful and kind, but for that we had to put up with his jokes, some very funny, some a bit risky, but then that was our John. I enjoyed our trip to Bagnang together, where he wrapped up warm for the visit, of which he thoroughly enjoyed. It was a shame he couldn't attend another visit as mayor due to his health. John had decided it was time to retire from the city council at the elections next May, as his health was not always at its best. But it was his great wish to serve as the mayor of Chelmsford, and indeed, I nominated, excuse me, I nominated John for that position. He took his role very seriously and hoped he would undertake his duties correctly, which he did. His greatest honour, of which he was immensely proud, was to deliver the proclamation of King Charles III on the steps of the civic centre. I started this tribute tonight stating that John Gally was a husband, a father, a grandfather, a councillor. But to a lot of us here tonight, he was our friend, for which he will be sadly missed.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Councillor Potter, I now invite councillor Robinson to speak.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As leader of the council and on behalf of my group, I would like to echo what councillor Potter has said and, as I already have done on a couple of occasions, obviously, offer condolences to Mrs. Gally and the family and the Conservative group. As Mrs. Potter just said, John joined the council in 2000. That's when I first encountered John in that by-election. But I didn't really get to know him until after I was elected here in 2011. But it was after I became leader of the opposition in 2015 and in the four subsequent years when I had alternative budget proposals to table, that I really saw what John was about. And as I think you've alluded to and councillor Whitehead spoke about yesterday, there was always a sense of humour and and we never really clashed in a great big political battle. And I think one of the things that you always notice is that whenever John had a criticism of our budget proposals, he always had a twinkle in his eye as he did it. And I think we knew that he was standing there with the best interests of Chelmsford at heart. Obviously, I've spent a lot more time with John over the last few months since he became mayor. We've attended many functions together, particularly related to the Queen's Jubilee and, of course, then the death of Her Late Majesty and the ceremonies that went with that in September. And as you said, councillor Potter, it was a real honour. And so John will have his place in history, having read out the proclamation and also, as councillor Whitehead mentioned yesterday, the first mayor in 110 years to have died in office. So he'll go down in history for that as well. It's been a very sad time and we had two services yesterday when we saw both the civic side in the cathedral and the more family and community side at Boreham Parish Church yesterday. And I think the tributes that were paid there really gave us a feeling for the wide and vast contribution that John has made to the parish of Boreham and the wider district of Chelmsford. So, as I say, I want to offer my condolences on behalf of my group and say that we will miss him. I couldn't help remembering your comment just now about that he was obviously Sergeant Wilson. I just wonder who was Corporal Jones telling councillor Whitehead, "Don't panic"? We'll miss John's humour, the twinkle in his eye, his wisdom and his contribution. On behalf of everybody in Chelmsford and on behalf of my group, we acknowledge the loss that the family and this council have suffered. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. I'd now like to ask councillor Roberts to read his tribute. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. What I could have said has been said, so I'm not going to say it if I can help. So I've kept it to one sheet of paper. It was with great sadness that my independent colleagues and I learned that John had passed away after a period of illness. If anyone were to ask me to describe John in one word, that first word would come to mind would be trusted. John was a mentor to some, a friend to many and an inspiration to all of us. I first met John when he was elected in 2000 at a Boreham by-election and he then joined Chelmsford Borough Council, of which at that time I was a member. So I've got a few weeks on it. Due to his experience in London's financial system, he became his party's financial guru and subsequently the finance cabinet member from 2003 to 2019. And this year, he became mayor of Chelmsford, a position he really wanted to do. John was a dedicated public servant who worked incredibly hard for the people of Chelmsford and his own parish of Boreham for over 20 years. John and I, coincidentally, had some mutual acquaintances in Boreham and I learned that he was well-known and liked throughout the community. I was told that the footpath where John lived was, quote, "the best in Boreham". John told me he didn't do it. I'm sure he didn't. I always found John to be a helpful and friendly colleague who cared about what he did. We have several conversations about the various things he had done around Chelmsford and in particular Boreham, where he was well-respected. He will be missed by his friends and colleagues from right across Chelmsford's political divide and be a hard act to follow. And all our thoughts are with his family today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. I now invite councillor Deakin to read a tribute.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. John was an established councillor when I was first elected to the council here in 2007 and I recall many discussions across the chamber between John, who had the financial portfolio, and Tom Smith-Hughes, his Lib Dem counterpart. Sadly, we lost Tom in 2012 and I know that John really did miss those interactions with Tom throughout the years after his passing. Seven years ago, Frieda Mountain, who is here tonight, I'm very pleased to see her, Frieda Mountain and I, we were part of a civic delegation that went to visit Bagnang in Germany. John was also part of that group and, as councillor Potter has also referred to it. It was late November and quite cold when we arrived and I remember waking up the next morning and the town looked absolutely beautiful. It was covered in snow, which is not something that we had expected. We had a busy schedule that often ended down in the town centre at the bottom of a very steep hill. John, Frieda and I helped each other up that hill back to our hotel several times and we laughed and joked all of the way. It was a pleasure to see the fun, lighter side of John, which we didn't obviously get to see too much in the chamber because, you know, that was serious business. We also joked about what went on in Bagnang stayed in Bagnang, so I'm not going to say anymore. I was delighted to hear that John was to be nominated to take over as mayor at the end of my term of office. He was so happy and honoured to have the opportunity before his planned retirement from council next year. It's very sad that John's time as mayor was cut short, but I'm pleased that many residents and organisations across Chelmsford got to meet him, to witness his great sense of humour and to see the twinkle in his eye when he was carrying out his mayoral duties. From the historic reading of the proclamation of the sovereign to the fun times like meeting children in play-in-the-park schemes. He rightly relished every minute of it. And my thoughts and prayers are with his family at this moment, but he will be very sadly missed by many. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Deakin. It is nice to hear the impact that our friend and colleague had on each of us over the years. I think we can all agree that councillor Gally will be very greatly missed. We must now move on to item seven, which does bring us to the purpose of this extraordinary meeting of Chelmsford City Council, which is to elect a mayor for the remainder of 2022/23 to continue his great work and honour his commitment. I ask therefore for nominations for the office of mayor for the city of Chelmsford for the remainder of the current year.
Madam Deputy Mayor, the nomination for mayor is yourself. The nomination will be seconded by councillor Robinson.
Are there any other nominations? I call upon councillor Whitehead to speak, followed by councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Or are you now deputy? I don't know which one. Never mind. In May every year, we've appointed a new mayor to serve the residents of Chelmsford and our meetings have been happy affairs, which have the support of all parties in this chamber. However, in the last few years, we've had a mixture of emotions. Firstly, Covid and now the tragic death of John Gally has made tonight both a sad event and a demonstration of how important it is to ensure that the civic life of Chelmsford continues. In May 2020, councillor Deakin was appointed mayor of Chelmsford, but due to Covid, this was done in a remote meeting and so the normal procedures couldn't be carried out in this chamber. In May 2021, council agreed to appoint councillor Deakin for a second term of office, of which there have been very few who've had that privilege, as her first year had been severely restricted by the Covid regulations. A meeting of the council did take place, but Covid regulations were still in force and so the number of people attending council on the 19th of May was reduced to 16. In May 2022, we were last free of restrictions and a proper mayor-making took place in the council chamber. Councillor John Gally was elected as the mayor of Chelmsford and he in turn nominated councillor Sue Dobson as deputy mayor. Sadly, our mayor has died whilst in office and you've already heard the wonderful tributes from councillor Potter, councillor Deakin, councillor Roberts and from councillor Robinson. Yesterday, the moving memorial service at the cathedral was attended by a huge number of people and was really a very, very wonderful event. That means we have to have a special meeting tonight to appoint a new mayor of Chelmsford and councillor Sue Dobson has been nominated for this honour. As deputy mayor, she's already well-known, but here's a few words just to remind you of her past. Sorry. She was born in Hornchurch and spent her early life there. She moved to Billerica after her marriage to her husband Keith and subsequently to Sandon, where she has lived for around 30 years. Following her career as an export buyer in the paint industry and having two children, she took on various roles within the community. She was the parish clerk at Sandon for 14 years, clerk to the governing body at William de Ferris School and a parent-governor and PTA member for several years at St John's Primary School in Danbury. Councillor Dobson was elected to Chelmsford City Council for the first time in May 2019 for Bicknaker East and West Hanningfield and she currently sits on the council's planning committee. The keen horse rider all her life, she has worked with both the British Horse Society and Essex Bridleways Association, campaigning for better off-road access for all vulnerable user groups, especially equestrians throughout Essex. And she's chair of the steering group for the Danbury Neighbourhood Plan. Councillor Dobson has already demonstrated her commitment to her residents as deputy mayor and we all thank her for agreeing to being elected the mayor of Chelmsford for the next six months. She will be supported by her husband Keith Dobson as her consul. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, for a few more moments. Councillor Whitehead has told us much about your history, but it's very clear that you've been very long involved in the local community and I've seen councillor Dobson up close as we've gone to a number of events together in the last few, particularly in the last five, six weeks since councillor Gally's passing. And I know, having seen her and how quickly councillor Dobson has risen to the challenge of being our stand-in first citizen at the moment, how she will fulfil that role very, very well indeed. I wondered, since we're all supposed to be reducing our car use, whether we might have the first horse-riding mayor over the next few months. Because we've heard that from councillor Whitehead. I know that in the role that you're about to take on, that you will be a fine spokesperson and figurehead for the city and the residents of Chelmsford. You've already shown you're dedicated to the community and will be a fine mayor for all of Chelmsford, along with your, supported by your husband Keith. And I'm very happy to second the nomination and I wish you very best wishes for the coming months.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead and councillor Robinson. I would like to thank the council for this expression of confidence and support in me at this time. There being no other nominations, I accept the nomination as mayor of the city of Chelmsford for the remainder of the current year. Thank you. I have great pleasure in nominating councillor Bob Massey as deputy mayor for the remainder of this mayoral year. I shall be grateful if another member could second this. Thank you. Are there any nominations? In that case, is the nomination of councillor Bob Massey agreed? Thank you. I therefore declare councillor Bob Massey elected deputy mayor of the city of Chelmsford for the forthcoming year.
......
Please be seated. Please sign with the badge of mayor of Chelmsford, councillor Deakin.
Please be seated. We now come to agenda item eight, where we shall now read and sign the declaration of acceptance of office. And I shall do mine now. I, Sue Dobson, having been elected to the office of mayor of the city of Chelmsford, declare that I take office upon myself and will duly fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Chelmsford City Council.
I, Bob Massey, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor of the city of Chelmsford, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Chelmsford City Council.
We now come to agenda item nine. I now ask that my husband, Keith Dobson, join me and be invested with his badge of office as mayor's consort. I now ask the deputy mayor to invest the new deputy mayoress with her badge of office. We now come to agenda item 10, where I would like to address the council. I am deeply honoured to be standing here, having been elected as mayor tonight and I thank all of you for your confidence in me to carry on the year that John started and for the kind words of support from many of you over the last few weeks. I truly appreciate it. John and I had the privilege of working together as mayor and deputy since May and I have some wonderful memories of the engagements we did together, normally accompanied by lots of laughter, especially in the car coming home, as our long-suffering drivers will testify. John had an amazing sense of humour but also an understanding of the need to be serious and dignified at times too. One occasion I shall always remember is the proclamation. There we all were, lined up in our robes, ready to walk out to face the crowds and John suddenly said, 'I feel like I need a parrot on my shoulder'. We all laughed and then he walked out, faced the crowd and delivered a word-perfect proclamation with all the dignity required for such an historic occasion. God bless you, John. I shall miss you. Tonight though, this is all about the future and moving forward and I will do my very best to carry on his ethos of working hard for this city with both dignity and humour as he would have wanted. Finally, I would like to thank councillor Massey for agreeing at very short notice to become my deputy. He is now in the unique position of having both accidental mayor and now accidental deputy mayor on his CV. Thank you, Bob. We come now to agenda item 11, mayor's announcements. I am pleased to announce that my chaplain for the remainder of the current year will be Reverend Terry Brown. I hope that's okay with you. And that my chosen charities for the year will be Farley Hospice and Parkinson's. Therefore, I declare the meeting closed and trust that members and our guests will join us for refreshments in the civic foyer. If I could ask you to allow a few minutes for photographs before moving through to the civic foyer. Thank you.